Next, I'm going to talk about our moving plan and in relation to the View and Vista campus. And it will also include Valley as well. Slide. So in February 2021, construction will begin on the View campus. This is what will be the final phase to our Measure S projects. And it will be a revamping of Hermosa View to expand its capacity, including new kindergarten buildings. Substantial construction begins in February 2021. More specifically, it'll begin on February 22. In the last month, the Erickson Hall Construction Company began conducting more substantive studies of the Hermosa View campus in order to prepare for the construction project. Out of that site study, what was revealed is that the electrical power to the campus will be completely knocked out once substantial construction begins. We looked at various alternatives and ways in order to avoid this. But the more we studied the problem, the more it became abundantly clear that there was no way around it, that without power to that campus, it simply does not have the ability to operate, especially in times of modern instruction, especially in times of COVID and distance learning. And in turn, there became other considerations in regard to various problems from a logistical standpoint of the construction. But the greatest being is that the campus simply will not have power. There was an electrical grid that was discovered under a parking lot that was unexpected. And that is where substantial digging and construction will take place. And it's one of the first things they need to do in order to meet their construction timetable. So therefore, we had to confront the brutal facts that the campus must close for students and staff by February 22, 2021, in order to remain on the timeline for the completion of the View campus by September 2022. Slide. So I'm going to take us back to the plan, the moving plan from 1920 and walk through that plan. So in 1920, the board reviewed various options and it was determined, it's called Option Four. And it kind of lays out in three phases. So in February 2021, there would be an interim placement of students during construction. So TK1 would have remained at Hermosa View School. And they would remain at Hermosa View School until the end of the 2021 school year. So the construction that would be taking place on the View campus could be taking place around TK1 students still able to attend the View campus. And then 234 would be relocated to the Hermosa Vista School. And that is our new campus. And so that would be for the remainder of the 2021 school year. Then that interim placement would continue in the 2122 school year. So TK1, though, would be relocated from Hermosa View because Hermosa View at that point would have become inoperable or the site would have been leveled. And they would have been moved over to the Hermosa Valley School. So we would have placed our TK1 students on the same campus with our grades five through eight students. And then 234 grades would remain at Hermosa Vista School. But again, this is an interim placement, so it would only be for the remainder of that school year. Because the final placement would take place upon the completion of View School. And this would be the 2223 school year. So at that point, TK2 would have its final resting place back at Hermosa View School. And then grades three, four would be at Hermosa Vista School. And Valley School would continue as a 58 school. Slide. So there was various options that were considered. There was three actually, but in looking at those options, the district ended up going with Option Four, which I just described to you. And that was the placement of during the interim period of grades two through four at the Vista School site and grades TK1 remaining at View for the end of the 2021 school year. And then being relocated to Valley School for one year in for the years 2122. Slide. So this update with the construction and with View Campus closing early has certainly changed what the plan would be. So now what we'd be looking at by the moving plan of 1920 would be that TK1 would be moved to Hermosa Valley School this school year. And then 234 would continue, would be moved to Hermosa Vista School. And that would be the remainder for the 2021 school year. So that would be a slight adjustment. The remainder of the plan would be the same for the interim placement. That TK1 would be at Hermosa Valley and then 234 would be at Hermosa Vista. Slide. However, this option was selected prior to any COVID-19 considerations. And it almost, I mean, let's be honest, it is a different world from when this plan was selected back in January, February, to where we stand now in December 2020. And I do believe that now that there has been this development in regard to the construction setback on the View campus, other factors need to be considered about keeping TK2 together and their COVID-19 factors. So these factors include the LA Department of Health Orders, student well-being, TK2 reopening logistics, and then also the TK2 waiver itself. Slide. So first, the LA Department of Health Orders. The LA Department of Health Orders very much revamp what in-person school will look like. This will not be school as you know it. We will grow, we will adjust, but it'll be a completely transformative experience. So first being that six feet social distancing requires that schools will now only operate at 50% capacity at any given time. So only half of our students can be on campus and in classrooms as opposed to a full scheduled day. Also, age-appropriate site design for health and safety protocols. Because there's a lot of different protocols that students and staff must follow. That includes masks, that includes student movement, that includes staggered starts, and it also includes clean protocols. That's just to name a few, outside of even just the various contingencies that are on campus for pickup and drop-off, as well as for moving about campus, as well as for classroom procedures. And then another issue to consider is the TK2 waiver reopening. So as we stand right now, the only grade levels that are able to return to in-person instruction under a waiver is grades TK through two. So the remainder of our students in grades three through eight, their start time is indefinite. Though I'm hopeful that 35 will return within the 20, sometime in February 2021. I do believe, though, that there is no set start date for when those students will return. Slide. Another consideration under COVID is student well-being. Of course, student well-being is always a consideration for our students. But as I mentioned, with the completely revamped shape of what school will look like, I know in speaking with our parents and with our staff, that there is concern that school will be a, perhaps, yeah, at least at first, a scary experience. I just want to share this picture of a staff member in full PPE gear. I mean, that includes gloves, includes masks, includes perhaps a face guard. And students themselves will also be in masks. All students will be required to be six feet apart. Students will have to move six feet apart. If a student or staff member becomes sick, there's an isolation room where we have to isolate them and for them to return home. This will be just a very different environment. And those environmental differences are substantial. So some of them are, you know, a shorter schedule. Students will only be at school a maximum of two and a half hours per day. And then it will be a quick transition for students as well, too, during the course of that day. The, there's, students will possibly have a new teacher because we're having to collapse our models and rebuild to an extent. We're making every effort for students to retain their teachers. However, the nature of us having been on emergency school closures and having to separate them, there are students that will not be continuing on with their current teacher. And then, as I mentioned, mask, social distancing, and other health protocols will be a tough experience for our students. And another thing to highlight is that for our TK students, this will be their, in some cases, their first school experience. So how they know our Hermosa campuses will be under these conditions? So student well-being during a COVID reopening, and particularly because these students are first, we are concerned about student well-being. We believe that we can meet the moment. We've invested in social, emotional resources. We prepared our protocols. We have a fantastic staff that we're working with. But we also recognize the challenge that it'll be for our younger students as well. Slide. Just to kind of continue on with student well-being. In the event that we continue with the Option Four or the 1920 plan this school year, our administrative staff would be split across the Vista and Valley School sites. So to consider, second grade would be going to Vista and grades TK1 would be going to Valley. So that means that Principal Ted Scott, Counselor Christie Cole, Secretary Christine Diaz, and staff like, and the school site Jasmine Rahman would be split across those two sites, having to share time. And, you know, these are administrative staff members that during the course of distance learning or prior, you know, like students have built relationships with. And it will be a challenge, you mean, like, in order to serve those students, particularly under our counseling model, when they're split physically across two separate sites. Another thing to consider is that teacher collaboration coordination, which has been essential and will continue to be essential under a hybrid reopening, as it was during an emergency school closures reopening, would also be split physically across sites. We are one of the only school districts that negotiated with the collective bargaining unit to have teachers report one day a week for the purposes of collaboration. And there is no substitute, though, for teachers working closely together in order to support students, particularly when you're completely relearning how you do school. And then the parent community would be consecutively split across the sites as well, too, which is something to consider. In these very uncertain times, I do think that our community has banded together in order to support each other with various needs that have occurred. And that community would be split across the Vista and Valley School site. Slide. So then, you mean, like, let's talk about some of the TK2 reopening logistics themselves. Because this is not like any other year. It's completely different. And these are considerations that would have not even been dreamed of back in the 1920 school year when we were looking at these moving plans. So the total students at TK2 is actually less than grades two through four, and that's because of a drop in enrollment. So in grades two through four, currently, right now, there's 371 students. In grades TK2, there's 328 students. That's almost two classrooms less as opposed to grades two through four. Another thing to consider is that 100% distance learning option has reduced the total number of TK2 students. So we're not, the full class isn't even returning. 62 students have registered for virtual learning only, and they're not going to physically attend. So they won't, they won't be at school, like, they'll be, they'll be doing distance learning. Another consideration under reopening logistics is that only 50% of students will attend in the AM cohort and PM cohort due to social distancing requirements. So out of those 262 students, half of them are going to be showing up in the morning. You mean, like, from, and that's 137 students. And under the PM schedule, 125 students will be showing up in the afternoon. So even from a capacity standpoint, it's not comparable to, you mean, like, an entire school site showing up at once under a traditional schooling reopen. Slide. So I'll take it a step further that, under a TK2 logistics, that the pickup and drop-off, which I know traffic has been a concern in regard to TK2, particularly TK1. But the pickup and drop-off under the LA Department of Health guidelines has to be staggered. And it's by grade level, so that only one grade level at a time will be entering and exiting. So now, if you really break it down, so it's happening in every 15-minute intervals. So under the AM cohort, TKK, that starts at 8:00, 49 students will be showing up the school. And then first grade at 8:15, 47 students will be showing up. Then second grade at 8:30, 41 students will be showing up. And the PM cohort in TK, only 37, seven students will be showing up at 11:45. And then first grade at 12:00, 44 students will be showing up. And then at second grade, 44 students at 12:15. Dismissal likewise, that it'll be 15-minute intervals with these numbers of students, which, again, when we think about arrival and dismissal, we think about a whole school arriving and dismissing. I mean, like, for us, I mean, like, the, you know, that would be TK3 at View, right? And as far as those traffic considerations. But under this, it's like nothing we've ever seen. This is a substantially smaller number of students that are arriving at a time. And I just think from a traffic flow standpoint, it's not even remotely the same as a traditional opening outside of COVID. Slide. Another consideration is actually the TK2 waiver itself. So something to kind of keep in mind is that if we have a secondary elementary location, so, you know, it was never intended that K1 would be moving this school year. But with a secondary elementary location under the waiver rules, we would have to apply for a second waiver. So the waiver, the new waiver would be required to open up a second elementary location. In this case, it would be at Valley School. And the, something to keep in mind, too, is it's not that the Valley School is empty either. The Valley School is operating under the small cohort guidance. So as you saw in the earlier presentation, that we have a pretty substantial number of students participating in special education services at the Valley School site. Slide. So, yeah, you know, as far as TK2 continuity during COVID-19, the LA Department of Health Orders, they've changed the operation of in-person instruction. So I do think that as far as considering the moving plan back in 1920 and now considering it now, it is an entirely different game. And the reason being is, one, because of the construction setback. And two, and I would say more importantly, is because of COVID-19. The world has changed. And in turn, we will, you know, evolve our plans with it. I also believe that our youngest students' well-being is better served without splitting them across sites. I think that under these very uncertain circumstances of schooling, that is very important that our youngest students are with like-age students. And that's for their social and emotional well-being and trying to navigate this world of six feet social distancing, reduced amount of school time that they're at school, and wearing of masks, and the threat of COVID. TK2 reopening logistics under the LA Department of Health Orders is substantially limited compared with the pre-COVID logistics. So the logistics of traffic are not remotely the same. There's challenges within them as well. But there is a big difference of 321 students showing up for school versus, you mean, like, what you see there is, you know, in 15-minute intervals, you know, somewhere between, you know, 44 and 37 students showing up at a time. And then the TK2 waiver prioritizes TK2 students on campus and requires a second waiver for the split. So the other consideration is the only students that we have going back to school as we speak today are TK2 students. So they're, you know, of course, our highest in-person priority because they're the only students that we can bring back to school. So to consider to split them will also require the additional logistic of applying for a second waiver. Slide. So something just to kind of bring back, you mean, like, when, you know, this stakeholder group, a stakeholder group reviewed various options. And there were, there were actually three options that were available. And option one was that K1 would go to Vista. Sorry, this would be the students that, the grade levels that would be placed at Vista in the interim periods. So the three options, out of those three options, here they are. Option one was that K1 would be placed at Vista and that there would be a full-day kender and second grade would be split. Option two was that K2 would be placed at Vista and it would be a half-day kender. And option three is that 12 would be placed at Vista and that kender would be at Valley. And there were some word criteria in this presentation as well, too. Part of, part of that criteria was that the separation of K1 from older grade spans was something that was of value. And no splitting of grade levels between sites. That was something that was also viewed as, as part of the criteria. Slide. So actually, can you go back one, Michelle? Just to point out, inevitably, what was decided was not Option 1 through 3, but Option 4, which is what I shared with you earlier. So that was not part of the stakeholder group, but it was a separate option that was considered in relation to various considerations. Slide. So this is Option 2. Option 2 was the placement of TK through 2 at the Vista School site during the interim period. And it was under consideration back in 1920. Slide. It was also actually studied as part of the Environmental Impact Report. So it was part of the initial View study. And that, the Environmental Impact Report was adopted by the board. Slide. What I'm proposing now and the option that I believe that we need to move forward with is a change in option. All of these plans were viable, but in consideration of all of these factors for COVID-19, as well as the construction setback that displaces our K1 students this school year, I would like to move forward with, from February 2021, during the interim placement, that TK2 be placed at Hermosa Vista School. And that 334 be placed at Hermosa Valley School. Grades four would just remain at Hermosa Valley. And grade three would be moved to Hermosa Valley in this case. And in the event that progressive reopenings continued, then Hermosa Valley would operate as what we know right now as a 35 school or eventually a 38 school. Slide. Here are the moving dates. So the first week of February 2021, furniture would be moved into Vista School as Vista continues to be completed. From February 15th to the 19th, a substantial move of classroom materials to Vista School and Valley School would take place. Then on Monday, February 22nd, TK students and staff would relocate to Vista School. Then on Monday, February 22nd as well, the third-grade students and staff would relocate to Valley School if third-grade students were back in school by that point. And then ongoing, the fourth-grade students and staff would remain at Valley School. Slide. In regard to communication, a letter notification will go out to parents and community about these relocation plans. And that would include a survey for questions that would be included in a letter. And for the community, it's an email that they can utilize in order to ask questions. And then on December, January, through January 2021, we'll release an FAQ to the parents in the community about relocation plans based off those questions. And then in January 2021, we'll present a moving plan to the broader community. Slide. As far as like the logistics, just to recap here, and the logistics at Vista, which are definitely a consideration under Option 2. Some things to highlight is that the total students at Hermosa Vista School will be actually less under this plan. So it's less students under Option 2 than under Option 4. 100% distance learning option reduces the total number of TK2 students, in this case, by 62 students. Only 50% of students will attend in the AM cohort and the PM cohort due to social distancing requirements. So the school will always be operating at half-capacity during the course of a school day. And the pickup and drop-off will be staggered by grade level, so that only one grade level at a time will be entering and exiting. And I showed you those demonstration of numbers that ranges somewhere between 37 and 44 kids at a time. And there will be no parent visitors or volunteers on campus due to the Los Angeles Department of Health Orders. So there will not be a lot of in-and-out traffic from parents because really, parents' access will be based only on pickup and drop-off purposes. Slide. In regard to grades three through four, the, I want to reiterate, the LA Department of Health has indicated that 3 through 5 opening may be possible in January and February. We do not have a solid date. A lot of this was prior to the surge becoming so extreme. But it is our hope that at least by February, that we'd be moving in that direction to a 35 reopening. Valley Campus is prepared for reopening. It already has students. And so it will also be ready to take on our 3 through 5 students and then eventually our 6 through 8 students. And then just something to note, too, that grades 3 through 5 will also be operating under an AM/PM schedule. Slide. That concludes my presentation. At this time, I'll take any questions. Thank you, President McCall.
Thank you very much, Jason, and Paul for bringing that together very comprehensive. Yeah, I'll open it to, in this order, just make sense, Jen, Maggie, Doug, Quentin. So I'll start with Jen. Do you have any discussion comments?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the, all the information. It's helpful to see it all laid out there. I know we've gotten a number of questions from, you know, not, but this is going to be new news to the neighborhood, new news to the community. So just to, I think, laying it out the way you did, it helps to rationally see why the decisions had to be made this way or need to be made this way. I did have a couple of questions just to kind of follow up on some of the emails that we've received. One is, just, and just to clarify for me, you know, if I'm, I'm wondering, like, why wouldn't the construction company have known this earlier?
Great question. And in my introduction to the construction world in the last six months, I, one thing that we've learned is that delays and setbacks and unanticipated contingencies happen. I mean, let's take, for example, that Vista School was supposed to be completed, you know, a while ago. You mean, like, that, you know, the project was delayed for years. So Vista School's completion was supposed to be earlier than this year. And like, and now we're, you know, we're here in February. So setbacks to construction just happen. And what I found in, you know, in coming in onboard is that, you know, Erickson Hall and the district, you know, had a plan about, you know, how it would look and how it would work. And then as Erickson Hall prepared and started to do further site studies and prep their construction actually on the site, there were things discovered. View is an old campus. This electrical grid that they discovered was unanticipated. And we tried several workarounds to avoid this need, but it's just something that came up. And I, as it's been my experience, this has been consistent with construction developments in general.
Right. And can we have a, could we, you know, you just said that students are going to be coming in these increment time periods. And because they're kinders and first and second, you know, often, parents are going to, you know, hopefully, we can work on communicating the importance of walking to school if you live near that area and/or how we can guide people through the parking situation to not sit in their cars and wait.
Well, something to keep in mind as well, too, is that under the LA Department of Health Orders for those drop-offs, you cannot get out of your car. So this will be tough for all of our parents. But they follow very But they follow very strict rules, which our parents will be adjusting to when we reenter View Campus. But drop off is is that you pull up your car, you mean, like your child gets out of the car, we conduct a screening at the front of school and they enter. But parents cannot linger. And that is in relation to the Department of Health orders. And there is no parent visitors as well, too, even walk ups where at some point you. Have to release your child and they go through the screening process, but it will be a closed campus. And this goes back to this will be school unlike any other school.
It just, how can we also then encourage parents to go home? Or go have a coffee or go do something else and not not park in the neighborhood? I think that that might be a big concern.
That's fair. We will definitely put out that messaging and encourage that in order to decrease traffic mitigation. That is not a place to linger and that they will have to leave. I think our city is only a square mile. So I I think that they can make it home, but we'll 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 definitely encourage that and emphasize that as part of our messaging.
Okay. And then my other question was just, if, so we start again at Valley with, let, you know, if we get a. Green light to go three, five at Valley or three, six at Valley or three, five. Just the impact that that the third grade would have. And then if if we return our eighth graders, sixth graders and seventh graders. Just the impact of having younger kids on that. I think that that campus has seen that before. And tell me, tell us, you know, I guess I hear what you're saying is there are going to be fifty percent capacity. There's going to be an AMPM schedule. Just looking out for the third graders. I think that was like an issue in the past.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, under the original plan, we we would have had K one students with with them. So like this is at least closer in age. And with those students, we had the classroom space available in order to support them. Because this is actually, there's, there's less actual classes now coming to the Valley Campus because prior was TK one. Moving to Valley. Now it's just a singular grade level, third grade. And we've been working with the site principal and Ms. Rockwell. In order to make sure that those students are integrated as well as the four or five teachers that we know that will work closely with them to make sure that that staff. Is supported and integrated. And I think it allows for better collaboration, too, since they're more alike in grade range level.
Thanks. I don't have any more questions right now.
Thank you, Jen. Maggie.
Double muted, Maggie.
Thanks so much for the report on that, Jason. I really appreciate hearing all of those. And to go through it, I I empathize with our community members who feel like, you know, we are pulling a fast one on the neighborhood. Like in the back of my head, like, I just keep thinking, like, COVID's been pulling a fast one on us in, like, public education. Nothing we've gone into this year expecting to do. You know, has has gone the way we wanted to because of COVID. So I I. I hope our neighbors understand that, like, the reasons for trying to. Move the kids around this way is due to the impact of COVID that we could not foresee. When we first made our commitment to the Vista neighborhood. On on how we wanted traffic flows to work, on how we wanted students to walk, on how we wanted the campus culture. To feel and look like in that north neighborhood of Hermosa. I think Jen answered or asked my questions around like what what are the logistics, why not the logistics working out the way it does at Valley? I think. It's just really important for the community to hear, like, the the dynamics of what the Valley Campus looks like. And why that flow works on that campus, especially given the waivers. That we're seeing right now and how that process is being laid out by LA County Public Health. So I I think this makes a lot of sense in terms of how we have to do this in keeping the cohort together and keeping families and teachers safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Doug?
Yeah, thank you. I I don't have any questions, but I I have a few comments as well, similar in the vein to the the comments that Maggie made. I know there there are community members that feel that we've, you know, pulled a fastball or a bait and switch, use the words you want to use. But this is really the only option. For the, at least for the rest of this, this school year, for the reasons, Jason, that I thought you laid out really, really nicely and cleanly. You know, I know traffic is from the beginning of this project and even before the beginning of this project, I was been a major concern. So it was helpful to see the numbers of the actual people. The other piece we have to this is we just spent twenty months on an NTMP. They got approved and we're going to have all of those improvements as well. Those don't change just because we're now in a TK through two versus the two through four. Or, you know, AMPM or cohorts, that stuff all still exists and is in the planning phases. I know. The district is still working with the city on, you know, the implementation of the short term recommendations. That everybody's a believer in will be will be really helpful to help alleviate. The traffic concerns besides just the reduction in the number of students. And the spacing of the the drop offs and the pickups. And the one other piece in there that I noticed also is there is a gap. Also of like, it's like forty five minutes before the last, when the last AM class gets out and before the first PM class shows up. So there's even like an extended break in the middle there. So it's not just fifteen minutes like consecutively, consecutively, consecutively. So it should be pretty well spaced out. So, you know, I think that should help. And, you know, as I said, I think this is the only answer at this time. The one thing I would ask, and my other board members may disagree with me on this, but. Is that if we are, you know, in a situation where next year, the twenty one, twenty two school year. You know, looks more like a a normal quote unquote, normal or closer to a normal school year. To to revisit the discussion of the option four, you know, I sell I'm a big believer that the option four is. A in a perfect, regular, normal, pick your word world is the best option. You know, and that's why the board, you know, smartly made the decision to go with that when we did back in. Late last year, early this year, I don't quite remember. It was definitely pre-COVID. So if we're looking at a place that looks more like pre-COVID than COVID, I would like to revisit that discussion. At least for us as a board and an administration and district to talk that out. You know, the pros and cons, we we may decide that, you know, this is working well. We can't change it. It's too much. Change and logistics and things like that. We may decide, okay, we're ready to make this further move. I I have no idea. But I would like to visit that piece. That would be my kind of one request. But for, you know, the February twenty twenty one, this is, this is the only option. Because the only, the only thing that we can have happen, in my opinion, also is that we can't push that September twenty twenty two. Where we're reopening everything and we're kind of like reinventing HBCSD. Like, to me, that's nonnegotiable. And so we can, if we push the move to Vista. And then we push that date like that, that that we can't let happen, as you, you know, said at the very beginning of the presentation. And so this is what we need to do to get to our our ultimate bigger goal. So I think it's the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Clinton.
Thanks, Stephen. I think the Jen asked good questions and lots of good comments, which I'd echo that the only, so the only small thing I'd add in is. You know, one of the comments I've heard is around the the walking and and one of the reasons for preferring kind of two, three, four. Was that there'd be a greater walking population, which be a, which would be a traffic mitigator. In addition to the numbers you showed, Jason, which I think were very illuminating. The the reality, I think, in a COVID world is that, you know, there's going to be, that the walking and driving and drop off patterns are going to be different because with screening and whatnot. People can't just send their kids to walk to school. They have to be available in case the kids don't pass the screening to pick them up and that kind of thing. So I think. The 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 strong distinction that probably we thought was there a year ago between walking patterns. For the younger set versus the three, four set is is probably not valid during a time of COVID. And so I just think it's another. Probably minor point relative to the other ones about, you know, why this is necessary and why. This is the right path to take right now. Thanks.
But thank you, Quentin. Yeah, I, you know, thank you very much for everything and laying it out. I think, you know, having all those facts and points. Really helps. And, you know, thank you to the community that we're in. We are in bonkers times, for want of a better description. And, you know, this, you know, thank you to the families. You know, the fluid nature of everything in the community. I think, you know, this is an interim. This is an interim, and it's in the best interest of our children. So. You know, I think it's going to be, it's going to be good, you know, I. I for one am going to be, you know, my son would would be walking. I would super close to view, but we'll be walking to Vista. We will be, you know. And so, you know, maybe with the younger grades, maybe less so, but I, you know, I really appreciate it. And thank you.